Do you need some more water?
Oh, I'm all right now.
Can give you that if you want.
I appreciate it. I'll survive.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, we need a motion to recome in. Councillor Van Gruyff has put a motion to recome in. Are you in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go to item number 10, financial report. As you can see, there is none this meeting. We'll be there next month. We'll have something.
Just for the new council, just to explain, with the way the bank statements come in and all of that, it's just too difficult to get it for the first meeting of the month, so...
It's always a bit hard.
All right, let's go to item number 11, committee and other reports. 11A, there is a town council motion list. Let me explain that to you. For your information, it will present a progress report on the action taken from the motions that we passed in council. So when we pass a motion, normally it translates into some kind of action on the part of administration and going to different departments. And this is a progress report that you will see every month in your pocket. Okay? 11B, market surveillance, a quarterly report. That's regarding electrical distribution. And let me explain to you a little bit, and maybe if you need more explanation, Marion can add something to it. It's a meant to verify that no business has been conducted outside of the legislation in regard to electrical distribution. Okay? Does that make sense to you? Yes, no, maybe?
Say that again, please, for me.
Okay, I'm going to read it again the way I wrote it. It's a meant to verify that no business has been conducted outside the legislation in regard to electrical distribution. Okay? Okay? Do you want, Marion, to add to that, explain to you a little bit how we sit with our electrical system in town?
Yeah.
Marion, maybe if you want.
All right. Because we own our own electrical distribution system, there are certain regulatory requirements that we are expected for reporting through AUC and ISO. And NMAX, we have a contract with NMAX who undertakes that reporting for us. There could be retailers in the province who feel that we have done something outside of regulations, or NMAX has done something on our behalf outside of regulations as to reporting, or there's a pool that they have to balance every month with all the retailers, so all the energy that was used has to be balanced amongst all the retailers. And, you know, there's a lot of detail to that. So on a quarterly basis, I have to report to council if there's been any complaints filed against us. And then in turn, I file with the market administrator once it's been approved by council. So it's a very complicated process now with deregulation of the electrical industry. And because of that, that's why we have a contract with NMAX, because they have the expertise in-house. We're a very small component of what they do on a much larger scale, but they're able to accommodate us through their processes, so it's quite a seamless process.
Can you give an example of a complaint that you've got?
Haven't had one.
Yeah, we've never had one filed, so...
It's a good thing.
Yeah. It may be something like a retailer was perhaps charged for additional energy. It could be that some reporting wasn't done appropriately or in a timely fashion. There's... It's hard to say what a complaint might be. But it's not a customer complaint. There's... Like, that's, I guess...
Competition.
The differential between them is, you know, yes, there's customer complaints. Not everybody's happy with their utility bill. And, you know, they maybe got disconnected or a wrong reading or something like that. This doesn't deal with those types of complaints. They would be industry-related complaints.
Yeah. Councillor Van Gruyff, did you want to add something?
Mayor, can we go back to our motion list? And for myself being new, can we cover some of this stuff and explain? I know it's going to be a little bit lengthy, but I'd really like to know, you know, what's happening from your last council meeting?
Okay. Marion, do you have the list right-handed?
Yes, I do, yes. So the finalized Sunday sports bylaw, that bylaw... When the FCSS bylaw was passed, they rescinded bylaw, I believe it was 1441, which included 1441c, which dealt with Sunday sports. And under that bylaw, it was specific that no organized sport on Sunday would be allowed in town facilities. With an exception if they're not operationally funded by the town car system. Okay, so that eliminates the golf course and the exercise. So in reviewing bylaws about a month ago, it was, we realized that that bylaw had actually been rescinded with the FCSS bylaw, and so we just reinstated that bylaw. So it's simple as that. The fall compost pickup, with our garbage bylaw, and that's been in place for some time, there's been a component of that that said we wouldn't pick up, like, leaves, grass, clippings, those kinds of things. And so we've started to enforce that. And there were citizens who were concerned about being able to get their yard waste in the fall to the transfer station. Didn't have the ability to do that. So council chose to organize for the first week of November a compostable material fall cleanup. So we won't be picking up all the stuff like we do in the spring, but we will pick up compostable materials.
So that's leaves and grass?
Leaves, gardeners, grass.
Pumpkins.
And just on that, sorry, how do we know? I mean, they're all in bags, right? There's not a paint can in those grass?
They'll all have to be torn open and put into the compost pile anyway.
Or at the pickup, at the curbside?
No, they'll be done. So we have to hope that people are honest. Because, yes, we do run that risk. And there is compostable bags that you can purchase as well for that to be put in. And, you know, we may look at either. It has to be, because this was kind of a quick turnaround. We were only a couple of weeks when the decision was made. So this year, we didn't have a lot of regulations, but we may have to look at either it has to be compostable bags or a clear plastic bag, so we can see what's in it.
So that's coming up this Saturday, then?
Well, no, it'll start on your garbage day next week.
Okay.
So whatever your regular garbage day is, that's the day you can put those out, and then our crew will go around and pick them up.
Is everybody aware of that, Marion?
Well, we've tried to advertise the best we can. We didn't go door to door, but I don't know how else you can...
It's the same problem we always have, right?
It's in the papers, there are flyers at IgA.
On the website.
On the website.
On the TV.
On the day of pickup, how do they distinguish between the garbage and the compost? They just...
Yeah, Darcy's pretty good at being able to determine.
Usually tell by the weight.
The light one is the leaves.
So the letter of support for Chaparral, and you can probably find more detail in the minutes if you look back on minutes, but Chaparral had asked for a letter of support. There's some changes to the way the province is funding the licensing service, registration licensing service. And so they asked for a letter of support from council, just talking about the importance of those businesses in our community and hoping that they can be viable long-term.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you want to get into details about most of them. We, the penalty was just a tax penalty. RCP grant, that, again, we talked earlier about regional collaboration program. We have applied for a regional collaboration program grant for the intern program. For the last two years, we've had an intern in our office through this program, Alexis. And her term as an intern will be done in April of this year. And so we have applied for a year-one intern again. And we've applied for that jointly with Kerston County. So the intern would be working between both municipalities if approved. And because it's a collaboration between the two, I would highly suspect we'll probably get a good shot at it then. The utility extension, that was just a manhole had to be moved from one location to the other to accommodate a roadway. And bylaw 1621 was the... What is bylaw 1621?
Can I have a question on that?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yep, it was.
Can I have a question on that Schaefer utility extension? Were all landowners in that area agreed upon that road being put in?
It's out of his own property. It's out of his own property. Property he owns. No one else is...
But it's extending onto Third Avenue, isn't it?
No.
Oh, it's not going to go through Clark's or...
No, no, it's just going out to 10th Street.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so, sorry, 16... We're going backwards, so as I... That had to do with Sunday sports. There were some bales at the airport that just needed to be removed. We're just working on a new economic development plan, so I've just asked for that to be presented to council as soon as it's done. We requested a meeting with the Minister of Transportation at the AUMA convention, and that was with regards to an access to our industrial land on the west end of town. And I actually just received an email this afternoon that said the minister is not taking appointments at the AUMA, but he will have his staff meet with us. So...
Nothing surprising there.
Yeah, dilapidated signs at Redford Park. There was just some concerns about how the park was being, that that needed to be cleaned up. And the new homeowner warranty. There's new legislation in the province that is requiring all new construction to have new home warranty. So that potentially has an impact on contractors in our community because it's an insurance that they have to qualify for. So that's, we're just trying to find out how that's going to impact.
Where the project status is blank means we haven't had a report yet?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, let's go to the 11C. So if you have...
Just hang on a second, I want to back up. What, the first and second reading of the bylaw 1621, what?
That was done.
That was done?
Yeah. And if you look at the top one, the top one regarding the sports...
It's taken all 30 readings now.
Yeah, you have to look at the time.
That's why we're going backwards.
Yeah, I was looking at it backwards, too. That's why I was like, which is bylaw 1621?
Okay, good, thank you.
All right. So 11C, is the AUMA bylaws...
Sorry, I just need a motion to approve the market surveillance report.
Yes, of course. Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the survey... Marketing, market surveillance report.
Okay, so councillor Creed moved to approve the report. Are you in favor? Thank you. Yes, that's right, that is one that ours requires a motion. The AUMA bylaws and 2013 resolution is quite a lengthy document. And you can see that the different resolutions are passed by different towns or municipalities. The reason why it's important for you to have a little bit of an insight into those resolutions is because if those resolutions are passed at the AUMA, they have the potential to become recommendation to government.
Yep.
And so you have to take that seriously. Okay? For example, let's have a look at a few. We're not going to look at them all. To explain to you how the voting goes at the AUMA, you will have an electronic keypad, and you will vote as individual. But you should also have a sense of what our municipality believes is right or wrong regarding those resolutions. So let's take a few. For example, the creation of a provincial wellness foundation. As you can see, there are many, many foundations in Canada already. The page is page 48. Okay? So it's a well-meaning idea, but my point of view, I'm not so sure that adding another layer of government to AHS is wise when they ask for a resolution that says they vote 1% of the total Alberta health budget to a dedicated wellness foundation. We already require so much money to do this and that and the other. We take another percent, which is a fairly large amount of money, to do that. I wonder what...
It's another bureaucracy.
Well...
Yes, no.
A lot of it will go into administration for that program. Some will go to administer that program. So what's your opinion?
I have two minds on that. One is create another administration part of it. But the other part of it is, is the health and wellness, like what our clinic here has done here locally, has now become Canada-wide renowned. People are coming here to look and see what they're doing here with that program. That leads to a decrease in medical costs. And so to spend some money upfront to decrease costs down the road makes a lot of sense to me. And from our perspective, a program like that would probably benefit our town from the perspective of that we're now seen as one of the centers for that. That might be a way of expanding that program here.
Especially if we amend their motion to say, right at the end, "Like Kerston." That'll draw everybody's attention over there.
Any other comments regarding that?
I'm always concerned about more and easiers of government. That's just me, and I, like you, mayor. I get concerned when I see another level of government. It is well-meaning, there's no question about it. The intent is. But do we need another level of bureaucracy? I don't think so. That's my opinion.
Well, if we were to reduce the amount of the total budget, if we were to propose that they reduce it by 1%, and then just let the citizens donate that 1% to a nonprofit wellness foundation, reduce taxes and let the citizens decide if that's where they want their money to go.
Councillor Van Gruyff, any idea regarding that item? It really is a catch-22, isn't it?
I don't think there's an easy answer to that question.
No.
I'm in the same approach as Councillor Barfes. If this is going to help the mass, then we need to look at it very seriously. And it is devoted to help the mass. Regardless whether they have to have administration costs onto it or whatever, the end line, the bottom dollar is, you know, what's it going to cover? And chronic diseases is becoming a very, very serious thing. We have measles outbreak in Lethbridge. That's a chronic disease. Isolation tense, you know?
Well, it's an interesting take. In Europe, Europe always has taken a lot of an approach that is preventive to medicine. It has been done over 100 years. So it's a different approach altogether. This is something new. And I'm not so sure about the financing over the year. Is it sustainable? I think the idea is good, but is it sustainable?
We know our medical system as it is is not sustainable.
And that's what I'm saying.
That's the fundamental problem.
That is a fundamental problem that I see with that, too. Is that sustainable? And if it's not, what can we suggest different?
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is, but if you know that it's going to cost you, like, right now, $18 billion a year for our healthcare in Alberta, and by spending 1% of that, we can reduce that $18 billion down to $15 billion, then it's worth spending the money for it. I don't know if that, if you see that actual correlation actually take place around. That's a whole other issue, right?
Anyway, we don't want to take too much more time on this one.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, the intent is good, but I've never seen the province do something like that really well. It usually goes to upper-level bureaucrats, and that's probably the problem with the system right now.
Unfortunately, that's what I see as a problem. Okay, so that gives you a little bit of a chance to kind of...
So when we're at AUMA, we're looking at these resolutions?
You vote individually.
Right, we vote individually. But do we maybe need to be having some conversations with each other prior to there to say, you know, what are your thoughts on it individually?
They'll have dissenters for all these motions.
Yeah, absolutely, they do.
And they'll have discussion on all these motions.
And if you want to get a vote on that.
That's discussion with them. I'm talking within ourselves, so that when we're voting, we're voting for what we want to see happen.
And when do you want to do that?
I don't know.
They're probably about six hours here.
There's quite a week, maybe.
There's a lot of these here that really don't matter.
Well, there is one, 51, is one that is, if Mayor Scott was there, he would not particularly like that one.
Page 51?
Yes. It's the city of Brooks.
Oh, okay.
Mayor Shills. And it is the provincial income tax transfer payment. So if you look at what they would like to do is to suggest to the province to increase taxes by 1% in order to redistribute that 1% to municipalities, towns, villages, et cetera.
Per capita.
On a per capita basis. So it's a tax of the rich, essentially. In a small town, it's about the poor of the big towns.
Essentially, if Mayor Scott was there, he would say that was not really what he wanted to see. What he wanted to see is a better redistribution of revenues between counties and town municipalities. Some counties are really rich in revenues. Some others are not. And some are rich in revenues because they have oil or they have gas or they have minerals or something like that. And then next to them is a town that might not benefit from none of that richness that is just at their door. Now, the city of Brooks is doing very well because with the county next to them, they have an excellent agreement and financial partnership. So it works, so they don't want to see changed. I understand that. But there are many other towns, small towns in Alberta, that are not in that very favorable position. So that raising income tax by 1% to me doesn't fly.
Well, when you consider that the counties, it's estimated that they have $1 billion in the bank. And most municipalities are just hand-em-up. So the money that they've got sitting in their bank accounts isn't doing anybody any good. They're just collecting interest and not spending it. You know, like, we've had problems with some of the meetings we've had with the county, with FCSS. They kept saying, "Well, we haven't put in the budget this year, so we're not going to pay our share. We're going to pay you a normal amount." Now they've agreed to pay their full percentage. And as a result, the town was picking up the part that they didn't pay. And that puts more of a load on our reserves. So I agree with the past mayor that, you know, somehow we need to get that money back into circulation. And, you know, they always tell us, "Well, we have 1,800 kilometers of roads to repair." Well, some of those roads are in pretty bad shape. And I'm sure that they could spend some of that money to fix up those roads.
Anyway, you can see that those are really questions you need to ask yourself, is that good for us or is it not? Let's go to page 56. That one is an important one for us. It affects us. And I think we will leave it at that afterwards, and you can read through that a little bit more. Okay? That one has to do with MSI and with the new system that is a regional collaboration program. So Marion, if you want to explain a little bit those two types of, the MSI and the regional collaboration, and how one does not really replace the other properly.
Okay. The MSI is municipal sustainability initiative. And in your minders that I gave you yesterday, there was a listing of the grants. And the province has announced that they will eliminate the MSI operating portion of the grant by 2015.
2016.
Yeah, we won't have any in 2016. So the MSI operating, we used for things like covering partial costs of the library, you know, different things like that. We kind of, it was open to our interpretation as what we needed to be sustainable in our community. And they're eliminating that funding, and they're transferring the balance and adding to the regional collaboration program. And where I see the problem with that, you can see tonight, we've been pretty diligent of trying to access that regional collaboration program as best we can. But it's not something that meets our needs like the MSI did for the library. It may not meet local needs to work regionally, right? Sometimes you have local priorities that are really specific to your own community. And so that's where I see the disparity is. Is we do not want to end up as chasing grant money and implementing programs simply to chase grant money. So we've used the regional collaboration program where we feel that it is a priority for our community. But it's not, it's not the same concept of use of funds as we move forward. But I will say, the previous council took an approach to be non-reliant on government transfers within five years, to have our utilities at a full-cost recovery and to be non-reliant on government transfers, which would, if we get them, great. If we don't, we're not going to be hurting because of it. And so I have to applaud the previous council for making that decision because last year, when we were cut by $110,000 on our MSI grant unexpectedly, we were able to recover from that by using other sources of funding that we didn't plan on using. So for our municipality, I hope we're going to be okay in the future. And I've worked in government long enough to know that those grants come and go. And so I think it's important that we don't depend on those.
And Marion had a foresight to warn us. This is not going to be a rosy time.
So we prefer the municipal sustainability initiative over the regional collaboration?
Yeah, yeah. It gave us more flexibility to address local issues.
Mayor, we have the opportunity to speak to these motions and these resolutions. And I'm not wondering if we... I know that Marion is going to be there, and she's up...
No, she doesn't talk at those resolutions.
You're not allowed to...
She's on the mic, it's elected. But we can go to the mic.
Yes.
Well, we can record Marion, and you can memorize that.
There are times when it will be a good thing on that one. I wouldn't mind even speaking to that one. Because I really feel that some other towns that are maybe not in as good a position as we are might be suffering from this change, which is not helping. I mean, we have, we have had foresight, but some have not because the government always say, "Oh, don't worry, the money will be there." But I actually...
Yeah, I actually sat on a meeting with the province a few years... Yeah, I actually sat on a meeting with the province a few years ago, where communities were asking how reliable this funding there was. And of course, the position at that time was, it was going to be long-term funding. And there was even the suggestion that it was okay to borrow against that funding, because the capital investment would be coming back on the province. Well, the capital is still there, but I don't know how much longer it's gonna be there. So I hope that the municipalities sitting in that room didn't, didn't go out and borrow on future grant revenue, because it...
See, these kinda, these kinda things need to come up in, when they're, when they're doing this resolution and just say, hey, just a minute, you know?
Yeah, and, and you can talk to it, I can talk to it, it doesn't have to be one designated. We're all individual.
Yeah, just remember, you have a very select period of time to speak to.
Exactly.
So you need to make sure you have your written...
Notes, yeah.
Notes, and that you're very clear in your presentation.
Do they, do they give you a set time period?
There's a timer on the screen.
What's the time?
I believe it's a minute or two minutes?
You really have to speak fast and deliver.
I think for the resolutions, you have up to three minutes to present the resolution, and maybe a minute for the response or something like that.
And they alternate between four and against, they have somebody speaks to it, and then somebody against. If there's nobody speaking against it, then they don't, then they don't need to have other people speak for it.
No, then it's adopted, right?
And they just call it over.
What, what is your impression of what most municipalities' thoughts will be towards this resolution?
I really can't say. I would think that most municipalities are disappointed that that funding is, is terminated.
And would probably support this resolution.
Yeah, I, yeah. I mean, it's kinda like the previous discussion where you understand the rationale and the benefit of the regional collaboration, but sometimes it just doesn't work, right?
Or they have to put something in place that gives us a flexibility to access, pool of money to address local issues.
When they, when they offer these resolutions, you're gonna be sitting in a hall with about fifteen hundred, two thousand delegates, and it gets pretty wild.
Well, it's, they have it quite under control. We have been there every, every year, and we have found it quite under control, haven't we?
I think one thing that's important, though, is if you're going to present at those conferences, it really should be, council should discuss the position ahead of time.
Exactly.
Because when you get up there and you say, I'm councillor so-and-so from the town of Cardston, there's an assumption that you represent a town. So I, I think that's important as well, that it is discussed here ahead of time.
So this is why, those are the three that I think are quite important, the meeting ones. And the rest, well, some are interesting, some are less interesting.
I'd like to take a, you know, a principled approach to it. And whenever you ask the government to do that, if that's going to increase regulations, if that's going to increase government bureaucracy, then maybe we don't wanna go there. So any, any resolutions that favor local, local communities and, and action in local communities or decrease government regulations, those are the ones that I will support. So that's, that's my principle ideas as I read through the resolutions.
Just got a comment. I was just down in Ontario with my visitor, my brother and sister, and I got into this conversation about regionalization. And I noticed every, the areas I used to go through when I lived there, they've all now become these cities, but all the little towns, the little, you know, little communities that used to have their own town councils and those councils, they no longer have them. They, the government regionalized everything with initiatives like this. As my brother was saying, he said, they took away all the power of the small communities, and they have made all kinds of regulations and bylaws, he said, it's just about impossible to do anything. You can't cut down a tree in your own backyard without getting a permit, without going, asking for permission to do. That's the extreme, but he said, it's just about every little thing that you do in your own property, you can't do anymore, because the regional government has a bureaucracy up there, you have to apply for this and this and this. And it, and it's not good.
Okay, should we go back to our, our agenda? Thank you for all your comments and your participation, I appreciate that discussion very much. Okay, let's go to eleven D. That's a draft, South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. As you know, this is a very lengthy document, it's one hundred and fifty-five pages. And there, there we have a site that we can guide you to, to try to see the municipal perspective position paper of ORSC. So if you want to write it down, if you want to write it down, it's www.orsc, so it's O-R-R-S-C dot com. And the name of the paper is Municipal Perspectives Position Paper.
Is it like slash municipal?
Uh, no.
It'll be on, it's on the right-hand side, down to the bottom of their home.
So you just go to the web website?
The website.
And then, and then you look for the...
Website again, www.ORRSC dot...
S-C?
S-C.
C.
C for Commission.
Yeah.
Dot com.
Okay.
Okay? So it's really called...
And the paper's called what? The municipal?
Municipal Perspectives Position Paper.
On the South Saskatchewan Regional Draft Plan. But that was a position paper, if I might, Mayor, I apologize. That was a position paper that Old Man River put together for the municipalities they represent, when the original draft was started with the South Saskatchewan, and how they felt that the, this plan may have an effect on the municipalities. So it really is a good position paper to read. They are also putting together an opinion on the draft plan, and they will distribute that, they hope, within the next couple, three weeks. But it, you know, it's gonna take some time to kind of express their opinion on the effect on the, on the municipalities who are members of ORSC.
And if you notice, there is a session on November nineteenth at the Senior Centre from nine AM to two PM. And so by show of hands, who intends to be there that day? It's just a day before we leave for Calgary.
That's the Monday night?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday day.
Tuesday.
So the same day you will be meeting.
Yeah, but it's from nine to two, so...
Nine AM?
Nine AM to two PM. How many of you will be willing to be there? All will be there?
I could potentially be there.
I'm the same old, I'll try.
I can't.
Okay. My councillor?
No.
No, you cannot be there. Councillor Edmonds?
No.
No? Okay, so we will be potentially two or three. Okay, that's good, thank you.
I just have to RSVP, so they have an idea who's attending.
Marion, is that the same position paper that you had here a couple of years ago?
Yes, that was that position paper.
Public can come to this too, right?
Yes.
I know my wife has already said she wants to go.
The, the meeting during the day is intended, I think, to meet more with councillors and those affected. And then there's a public meeting in the evening.
Okay, that's from ten to two, so?
Nine to two.
Is the purpose of the meeting just to report, or is it to discuss?
It's to be informed.
To be informed, so more of a report.
I know, I think there's gonna be some opportunity for discussion, and that's why I think it's important to read that position paper.
Sure, sure.
Because, you know, you need to go there understanding what this is all about before, to be prepared to speak, yeah.
I'll, I'll make an effort to do that.
I don't know what the format of that meeting is.
I don't know.
It's all of this.
It's one hundred and fifty-five page, no?
Yeah, no, I read it last night.
There's, there's some good things in it, but there's potential, potential...
I skimmed it.
Is there nothing on TV?
Dancing in the stars. Okay. Eleven E. Potential college meeting date, that's the Southern Virginia University meeting with Superintendent S. Broskill and staff. There is an evening meeting planned in Lethbridge at seven PM on Sunday, November the seventeenth. I'm not so sure where.
That'll be at the Lethbridge State Center.
We just got an email tonight from...
Oh, good.
Yeah, I've got that opener in front of me.
You can speak to it then.
So the, the one on Sunday is, we'll be at the Lethbridge State, State Center at seven PM, and it's being hosted by State President Cam McCollum.
That's on Cedar Drive?
Uh, Lethbridge State Center, yeah, that'll be the Cedar Drive one.
Okay. That's by the IMAX, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one.
At what time?
That's at seven PM.
That's at the meeting on November the eighteenth, a Monday, ten to twelve in Cardston, that's what we had more information.
Yes, we're hosting that meeting.
In this room?
Yes.
Is that a public one?
No.
Okay. But councillors are invited to attend?
Ten to twelve.
So it'll basically be the thirty-eight member group that they've put together, plus anybody councillors are invited.
Okay. And on the same evening, it appeared that there was a Calgary fundraising meeting in Calgary?
That one, I believe, is being done on a, more of an invitation basis for that one. And then Tuesday the nineteenth is a, at seven in Calgary, is a public meeting.
And where will that, will this one?
That would be the Calgary West State Center, and State President David Litchfield will be hosting that one.
Calgary West State.
That's just great, the meeting starts, right?
NUMA starts the next morning.
Well, there's, there's no meetings Tuesday night. We're just gonna be there, they'll be there.
Yeah. Marion, did you intend to be at that meeting on the Calgary one?
If council would like to be there, I think it would be good to have some representatives there.
My intent is to be there.
I'd like to show support.
Also in her email, I just might add, they're planning another meeting in Edmonton the next day as well, so it sounds like they're, they're able to maybe gaining more support in the province than we initially thought, so that's good news.
Okay, that's great. So anymore regarding this item? No? Okay, so on your agenda, you can see there always will be an item just called questions. So let me tell you what that's for. It offers council an opportunity to ask questions of administration if there is something regarding past motions or items that you really would like to have a little bit more information about. It is not meant for, to put administration on the spot or to catch them off guard. That is not the intent. Okay? So let's be very clear on that one, no one likes to be caught off guard.
Can we ask a question that they can answer next time?
Totally.
Or put one on the agenda?
Totally. Totally, those are the proper thing to do.
If, okay? If we don't have the answer, we will tell you, we'll bring it to you. Yeah, it's more of a problem if we have additions to the agenda that we're not prepared for.
True.
That's more difficult, but questions, we can usually fumble our way through or get you an answer later.
Just to add something, if there was an item that you, you really would like to see on the agenda, for example, an item that I brought as I was campaigning was at Fall Pickup. I brought it to Marion, Marion said, why, why don't we put it on the agenda? And we had a little bit of background there, and so this is the way it came to the agenda. So that is something that you can do also. If there's something that really you feel should be at the agenda of interest to all of us and for the town, then you go to Marion, it will be put on the agenda if she thinks it to be the right place for council to discuss, and background there will be provided for us.
Just for clarification on that, you maybe ask if you're bringing an item that you'd like to be put on the agenda, to provide some background information, some support documentation for that. Occasionally, we'll ask for that. Lots of times, we've got the backgrounders already, but we may ask you for additional information, just for clarification.
All right, so it is an open meeting.
So we don't need to get like a second signature from a councillor to put something on the agenda?
No, no, no.
We have that request for decision forms, is that in our binders there?
Um, you know, I don't think I put it in there.
I thought I saw something in here.
The council request for decision form?
Oh, yeah, there was.
And they'll see it.
I'll get a copy to all the councillors, so that's, I probably missed that.
Now, we're going to go through all the lengthy correspondence items that is there. The first item is a lot of, it's a little bit of a pamphlet, Fortis Alberta. And regarding the distribution rate, Marion was waiting for some update. Did you get some, Marion?
Yes, I did, actually. So in a nutshell, Kevin Phillips is, Phillips and Partners, he's a consultant that we use to give us advice on our regulatory requirements, as well as rate structures for our electrical distribution. And we've used Kevin actually since the deregulation. He works for not only the town of Cardston, but for the town of Fort McLeod, Crowesness Pass, and Penoka. We can call ourselves the AAMPS, which is Alberta Municipal Power Systems, and he works on our behalf. So I asked him for an opinion on this, to determine how this will affect the costs and our rates, because right now, we have a distribution and transmission charge that comes directly to us from Fortis, which brings basically the power from the generator to our boundary, and then we distribute it from there. So he looked at those rates, has been doing the analysis on it, and in your package, it appears we're a rate sixty-three, and it appears that we would have a seven point seven percent decrease.
Yes.
But the reason it appears that way is because when Fortis does this analysis, what they do is they take all costs into account, including the energy side, which is not something that we pay for. The consumers pay for the energy, the town doesn't pay for the energy. So we have a distribution, a transmission portion, as well as taxes or any riders that may be in place. So with that being said, in Kevin's analysis of this, he anticipates that the estimate increase for two thousand and fourteen would act to our rate for distribution and transmission would be about twenty-three point two percent. He estimates the distribution component would increase by six percent, and the transmission component would increase by twenty-two percent.
Wow.
So what we will do now, and what he has done for us now, is he's calculated how, because that transmission is something that, transmission distribution from Fortis, that we need to, we need to transfer through to the consumer, because otherwise, we're subsidizing it through tax dollars or whatever else. And so Kevin is now working on rates, we've got some preliminary numbers from him, and we will be bringing a rate scenario to council, probably at the next council meeting on the, whatever day of November that is, and I apologize if I don't know.
So just to be clear, we're, we're getting a, it sounds like more than a thirty percent increase on, on what we pay, and we're just passing that along to the consumer?
Yeah, it, because distribution and transmission, it's a very complicated formula that they work on for rates, okay? So the, the total together combined would be about twenty-three point two percent.
Okay.
Twenty-two percent on, or on transmission and six percent on distribution, but combined, it, it recalculates, it, yeah, recalculated. So it's twenty-three point two percent.
It's a little different than a seven point seven percent reduction.
Reduction, exactly. And, and that's why when this letter came in, my first call was to Kevin, I said, what's our impact? Because I know that we're not seeing a seven point seven percent decrease.
Fortis is extremely profitable, it's not because they keep lowering the rates.
And so we don't have any... And so we don't have any control over those, because that's, that goes through the Alberta Utilities Commission, and they obviously have to be able to justify those rates to the commission. But again, it's, it's a cost to us to operate our distribution system, and so council is taking the position. When we reviewed the sale to Fortis, the offer for the sale, council did a very in-depth analysis of our electrical distribution system and determined that we should not be subsidizing those costs. They should be a flow-through, because they're an actual cost. Where we can control our costs is on our distribution size, side, and how we fund our utility. But those, those other costs are direct costs to the utility. Councillor Marion?
Marion, if we did not have our own distribution system, what would be the increase to our...
23.2%. They would be Fortis customers.
Flat right out.
They would, well, they would be Fortis customers, so the same rates would apply, whether they're our customer or Fortis customers. This is a Fortis rate.
But is that locked in for any period of time?
No.
Till the next time they apply the Alberta Energy Act?
We're not talking about the energy component here.
Okay.
Okay, we're talking about the distribution and transmission.
Yeah.
You only get to choose your rate on distribution and transmission. You only get to choose your supplier and your rate on the energy side.
Yeah. So it's a little complicated, but at the end of the day, there's no reduction to us.
One last question. The, so I, I understand that it's 20, whatever it was, 23% or whatever, to that, what kind of increase is the consumer looking at? Like, is that...
We will, we will bring that forward to you in November, because it will be...
It should be significantly lower, it should be like 10%.
Well, we, we can't tell you that until Kevin Phillips does the analysis.
Oh, yeah. I'm just thinking like ballpark, is it going to be similar to that?
It wouldn't be 23% on their overall bill. That's what you need to understand. It's only, it would only be on the distribution, transmit, well, actually, on our bill, it would only be on the transmission side, because that's lumped into transmission. When it gets to the town of Cardston, then it becomes distribution. So it would only be the 23% on the transmission portion of the bill. So it's not 23% on the...
It's not, it's not the biggest part of your bill.
No, that's right. Yeah, but it's like if it's $3, you're getting 23% more of $3.
Yeah, if I can explain how the, how the electrical works, maybe in a little bit of a simplistic form, is if you have a GM vehicle, okay? You've got GM, you've got a choice of, let's say, the, the car itself is either a big car, a little car, whatever, right? So you got a car or a truck. So your, your GM would be the, the generator, right? So they make the car. The transmission may be the truck, okay? So it's going to get you from point A to point B. The distribution is how it gets around on the roads, okay? So your truck's getting around on the roads. And the energy side would be the gas to run the truck. So trying to kind of simplify it, there's, there literally is that many components and that many players in the electrical industry right now. And so it does become quite complicated when you're trying to calculate that all in two ways.
Have we, have we looked at other suppliers besides Fortis?
We can't.
For distribution?
They are only, they are our only supplier, and that's what I'm saying, is you don't have a choice in some of those things.
There are certain things that you can't...
Well, there, there are all the lines, it's like Atco on some lines, but Fortis owns the lines.
Just like no one can buy, no one can pay distribution costs in the town of Cardston except the town of Cardston, because we own the distribution lines. It's monopoly, right?
Thanks. Thank you, Marion. Let's go to 13B, Old Man Watershed Council. Now here, it's a letter that requests for us to carry on having a budget item for $1,073, $1,073 per year. And this is in support of regional educational programs. So it's a good time to help people appreciate what the watershed does is...
They have meetings every once in a while that...
Yes, they do presentation every so often in Lesbridge, I went to a few last year.
He did one here.
They did one here.
Yep.
We, we have, Bart would actually attend these meetings on our behalf. We've been a member for a number of years.
Okay. 13C is a letter from Kevin Randle, is the regional traffic safety consultant. And if you could see, the project intended to do is to reduce the drinking, drunk and drivers. And it's a big sign that would be put by the highway. And essentially, we, they will pay for the sign and we will...
We pay for the installation.
Pay for the installation of the sign. Okay? 13D, do we need to have a decision on this one? I don't think so, it's a matter of...
I, I've told them that we would participate. We partner with Kevin and, and the municipalities in the south on a number of things, like the bicycle rodeos and the rollover simulation.
The bicycle rodeo is very successful in our town. Okay. Alberta Environment and Sustainable Resource Development. It's an invitation to meet with the staff and with Marion Devers. Was nothing to discuss at this point, therefore, I do, you and I, we will not meet them. E, it's a government of Alberta. It is to advise or support the implementation of two programs into one, which is called the New Family and Community Engagement Council. So it's essentially for your information. F, Economic Developers Alberta. Now here, there is an opportunity for somebody to go to a professional development course on November the 1st in Lesbridge. It should be very interesting, except I can't go because I have a mayor caucus meeting that day. So if somebody is interested to go, yes.
Just for clarification, because in the package, it was February 18th. November 18th, but today I got notice that they're having one in Lesbridge on November 1st. Right. So that's the difference.
That's why I was coming up.
I was gonna say, um...
If somebody would like to go and then report to council while they're gathered...
In light of what we have this Saturday, can we go? What's the time?
No, it's...
November 1st is a Friday.
Friday.
It's, it's...
Could we send somebody like Jeff?
This is an elected official's course.
Oh, he's an elected official.
I would be interested in going to...
Would you?
Yeah, I, I, when I first saw it here, I thought that was something I'd love when I saw the date.
I think that is something, the deal will be you report to council.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So what's the timing for that?
We'll get you the information.
Okay.
All I have is November 1st at this point.
G, it's AUMA, two different letters, one from the president, and just for your information. H, Old Man River Regional Service Commission. We need to choose a date between January 23rd and January 29th for an orientation for council. Is this paper here?
Same with AUMA.
Okay. If you want to look at it, Thursdays are not my favorite days, but Wednesday, January 29th, 7 o'clock is late. Thursday, January 23rd, 1:30, doable possibility. How many of you could be there on January 23rd at 1:30 in Lesbridge? You could do that?
January 23rd. I could be there in the evening.
As long as it doesn't go too late.
There are normally two hours or something like that.
Are we planning to go together, or can we all go at different times?
We need to RSVP, so I need to know who's going.
Numbers, kind of thing.
I'd have to shut down my office to go during the day, because my, my partner won't hit me in Arizona, so that's why the evening is better for me.
9:00 to 4:00. 9:00 to 4:00.
Okay. Who else would prefer 1:30? We, we, you know, I recognize that we cannot always all, all be there, you know, but we'll be able to fill your aim.
So who's at 1:30?
I could go at 1:30.
1:30.
I could go at 1:30.
Okay, just let me get, keep...
If I can get away, I will go.
Yeah, well, if you can, it's...
And it's roughly about two hours long?
Yeah, it's normally about that.
That'd work for me.
Councillor Burns. And so that just leaves councillor...
I'm not busy in that time here, so if I shut down...
Bengr is the only one else.
Could we be looking...
Do any of them work for you?
We just carpool the other day.
We can't, well, we... I'll probably be going in because I have to be in there for my pathway.
Oh, that's right. So you're going to go on yourself.
Okay. So that gives us a little bit of an idea. Thank you very much. And here we have Alberta Health Services. This is to inform you of the introduction of a new support and liaison service to assist municipalities in resolving local health issue, health system issues. I am not 100% sure what it will cover, but it sounds good anyway. I can't give you any more information than that, sorry.
Might you talk about ambulance services?
Uh, no. No. I'm not so sure that it will cover that, because that's already covered with Minister Weddick and the Alberta Health in a different way. So I don't think that it will cover that.
Well, I think if we have a concern, that would be the, that would be the avenue.
Regarding the ambulance service, if we had a problem with the service, it might be able to be answered with that. 13J, FCM, that stands for Federation of Canadian Municipalities. We are asked to renew our membership. We have been part of that organization for a long time. So that's something administration will do on our behalf. And we're coming to the end. 14, there are non-confidential items. Let me talk to you a little bit about confidential items. When we have confidential items, we need to go in camera. What does that mean is that those sessions are really reserved under the municipal art for three particular reasons. Land issue, legal, anything that is legal, staffing or personal matter. Anything else is at the table in a public sphere. Okay? So if you ever feel that if something does come in, in camera, that you feel, hmm, doesn't quite fit that, Marion is very good, she will not let that happen. But...
I don't have final say. I try not to.
Well, I'm very careful of that, that three years ago, I was really very particular about that. And I think we've done a good job respecting this. And so now we need somebody to adjourn, councillor Edmonds, perfect. And thank you very much for all your input. It's been an interesting session, a little bit long, but you survived and...
Pizza helped us.
Thank you for the...
If we go more than, if we go three hours, if we're past 8 o'clock, we have to have a motion to extend, because our, our procedural bylaw only allows for three hours without a motion to extend.
So we just did about very well.
One other thing, I think we should petition some of these groups who have a cheese and chocolate rather than wine and whiskey.
Look at that. Sir, sir.
You know, I... Dave, though, for your interest, I, I've been a sergeant-at-arms at the BAMF Regional Connection Realtors Conference four, four times. First time I got there, like, there's 800 realtors there, and I was one of the police for the whole convention. And they had two tables set up for us, and we'd come there, of course, everybody, they bring wine for all of us, right? And he'd come to me, and I just took my hand over the glass, I said, "No, thanks, I don't drink wine." He said, "You don't drink wine?" I said, "No." "Where are you from?" I said. "Cardston." "Oh." He says, "I'll be right back." And he went out to the kitchen, brought me a bottle of sparkling grape juice. It was no problem. And every year after that, and it was every other year, he'd come up to you, he'd say, "I remember you." He'd bring me my special stuff.
There you go.
So they're very accommodating if you ask.
There you go.
Not a problem.
No.